It is 7:00 PM and I would like to call this being to order the board met in closed session at 6:00 PM to discuss matters that fall into the following categories that are exceptions to the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Personnel matters, exception C1. Student matters, exception C9. Negotiations, exception C2. Illegal matters, exception C11. Close session minutes, exception C21. At this time, I would like to ask for motion to go in open session.
So move.
So move my Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Hannah. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. We are now in open session. Is that Principal Campos back there? Would you please do us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next item is president's report. And I just want to report a few things that are going on that have happened over the last month. On November 5th, the board had our second, our follow self-evaluation meeting with Laura Martinez, our IASB representative. It was a good meeting. And we concluded with the board agreements. They were supposed to be on tonight's agenda, but there was some confusion. And they're not on the agenda tonight for approval, but they will be on the next agenda that the board can formally vote to approve them. On November 6th, I was invited to participate in the student council meeting at Miguel Juarez Middle School, along with Principal Campos, invited by Mr. Patrick Freund. And I met with a number of their students on the student council. And I had a very, very nice meeting with them. There's some very motivated young individuals that are involved in the student council that want to make a difference. And I'm very impressed with them. Principal Campos and I were there. We were in the hot seat. Had to answer a number of questions and we also had a chance to ask them some questions. So it was a very nice exchange and I really appreciated the invitation. On November 7th, I participated in the large member district quarterly meeting. It was a Zoom meeting that involved all of the board presidents of all of the unit school districts in the state of Illinois. It's always very enlightening to participate in those meetings and hear what other board presidents have to say. On November 7th, that evening, which we mentioned in our last meeting, Mr. Riddle and I participated in the Bravo Waukegan concert that was held at the Gorton Center. It was a beautiful event. We got to see the mariachis perform Waukegan school districts own mariachis. And it was really great to see how far they've come in just a few short years. And I was very impressed and I'm just so happy to see that that program has succeeded. November 10th, participated, again, Mr. Riddle and I participated in the ribbon cutting event for the Yeoman Creek Solar Project. And that was really exciting. You know, we had that big snowfall overnight and it was kind of questionable whether everybody was going to be there. I even emailed the lady that was running the thing, telling her I don't know if I'm going to be able to dig out in time to be there, but I made it in time. It was a beautiful event. And we had a very, very nice front page story by Mr. Steve Saden. And I don't know if all of you saw this, there are a couple of familiar faces on the front page here. Mr. Riddle and I were there. I was cutting the ribbon along with Mayor Cunningham. And I just want to thank Mr. Saden. I know I saw him here. There he is in the back. For all of the wonderful press that you've given us, it's just so nice to see that all the good things that are happening in the district are being recognized. So thank you. On November 14th, Superintendent Placencia and I met with our student board members at Quonset Pizza for pizza and discussion. Had a chance to get to talk to the student school board members and get to know them a little bit. And we had some pretty good pizza, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And they also learned what a Quonset is, right? Okay. And let's see, also on the 14th, Superintendent Placencia and I had a Zoom meeting with Perry Hill from the Illinois Association of School Boards. He's from Southern Illinois and he is going to be the person that's meeting with the school board in closed session to discuss conflict resolution. And I think the date of December 10th was floated to the board members to see if they're available, all available on that evening. He gave us a few dates and we kind of narrowed it down. That seemed like the best date when there were the fewest conflicts. So if you haven't responded yet to the email, I think Mr. Aljack has sent it. Please respond because we'd like to firm that up as quickly as possible. And I think that's all I have. Okay, we have student board member report. Are we going to do this tag team or are we doing any of it?
Tag team.
Tag team, okay. Treasure and Frankie.
All right.
Sounds like a song.
All right. Hello, everyone. So this is me and Frankie's student board report. So today at school, I had made a survey to get the students' overall opinion about the food. And I placed QR codes all around the tables to further get all the kids' attention. So for my responses, I have 30 responses, I believe 14, I mean 13 being seniors and 17 being juniors. And for the overall students who actually eat the food, it's around, I would say like 73%. And some don't need the food, but there's a nice amount who actually do eat the food.
So one of the questions that were asked, was there any food that you would like to see on the menu? And we've got, they wanted more varieties of fruits. They would like to see pasta, quesadillas, orange chicken and rice, chicken, cup of noodles, pizza dippers, more varieties of sandwiches and salads, and some seafood boil.
I'm there.
Mr. Moulton, you hear that?
Coming up.
We also have breakfast food recommendations included muffins, pancakes, sausages, waffles, eggs and waffles.
All right. And then when asked for them more questions, they requested more pineapples, different chips, especially in microwave in the cafeteria, since a lot of kids do bring their own foods from home. So that would be very useful for the kids. And then improvements on burgers, I've seen like a lot of comments about adding more toppings on the sandwiches. And also different types of salads, like Caesar salads, different types of salads like that. And then in result, I know adding or even considering new items on the menu takes time, but I really appreciate everyone for actually hearing out the students and valuing their ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the very professional report.
May I? And hopefully, Board and Superintendent, Deputy, you all are hearing the students. And hopefully, in talking with our food service, they can replicate what the students are asking.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Item 7, specialty recognition presentations, I see none. Item 8, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes up for approval. And I'd like to take them individually if we can. Item A is the approval of minutes for the micro meeting open session, October 14th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Hannah. Any comments, corrections, changes? I have one correction I would like made, please. Page 3, at the very bottom, a single line about the third item up. It says Ms. Vanderborick stated, okay? I'd like that name, the correction, the name, please.
Spelling.
All right, just a spelling mistake. Other than that, everything. Stand. Do we, okay, we have a motion, a second, no more corrections. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries, minutes are approved. Next one is the minutes for the open session meeting of October 28th, 2025. Do we have motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any comments, corrections, changes? Okay, on this one, there were some, the version that was uploaded on board docs was actually a version before some changes were made, internal changes were made. And so that is what the board had an opportunity to review. What I'd like to do is highlight the changes that were made since the board has not had a chance to see the revised version. They're minor things, but on, and you have copies of this already, all these items I want to highlight. Yeah, on page 4, under L, renewal of Panopto, just the word authorize, take out the S, so it's authorize, that the Board of Education authorize. Items, let's see, page 5, at the very bottom, items E, F, G, H and J were grouped together and taken as one. I asked for entered, who requested it and why were they separated? And the revised version states that several board members requested that these items be taken together as one. And on page 6, at the very bottom, finally, items I and K were grouped together and taken as one. And again, I asked who requested, and on the revision, it shows they were separated by a request by Ms. Hannah and Ms. Lenzing. And on page 7, 11 consent agenda, item C was taken separately. Again, I requested, who requested it? It was requested by board member Hannah. And let's see, on page 9, B, personnel 1028, that the Board of Education accept the administration of recommendations, that's a matter of removing the S. These are minor changes, but I just want to make sure that we have the final version for the board to approve. On page 10, second paragraph, at the very far right, second line from the bottom, it says, issues being discussed are personal matters, which they are, but the point that I made is that they're personnel matters, personnel. So the word personal should be changed to personnel. And let's. On page 14, at the very bottom, was a motion by Rick Riddle and seconded by Carolina Fabian, at 8:55 to go back in open, closed session. It doesn't say how the vote went, so I asked it to be put in there. The vote was that all board members voted yes. And that is it. So I'd like to ask, oh, do you already have a motion? We already have a motion, a second, okay. So who made the motion? Was it Mr. Riddle?
I did, yes. I'll amend my motion to include the changes.
The changes, okay. Motion by Mr. Riddle to accept, to approve the minutes as amended. Second by Ms. Hannah, you are seconding that motion. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, corrections, changes to minutes? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, I was done.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries, minutes are approved. And then the last one is item C, approval of minutes for the special open session of November 5th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any comments, corrections, changes? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries, minutes are approved. Item 9, opportunity for public comment. Do we have a sign up sheet? Thank you very much. We have three names on the list. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. You will have three minutes to make your comments. And the first name is Lynette Oliver.
Before my official time starts, I'd like to say hi to Treasure, who's my former elementary school student. Hi, Treasure, I'm proud of you.
You must be proud.
I had to get that out of the way, sorry. My name's Lynette Oliver. I'm here tonight not just as an educator, but as someone whose entire life has been shaped by Waukegan. I was born here. I was a preschooler at Waukegan East. I attended Washington Elementary, Jefferson Junior High, and I am a graduate of Waukegan West High School. Waukegan has always been special to me. I grew up in this district. I returned to serve in this district and I have remained loyal to this district for nearly three decades. When I entered my teacher prep program in Wisconsin, I made special arrangements so I could complete my student teaching here. When the cooperating teacher I was with passed away, I requested special permission to stay in that classroom with those students and in this district because Waukegan matters to me. After graduating, I was happy to be teaching in Waukegan. Even after I moved out of the city, I chose to continue teaching in this district and I have driven to Waukegan because I believe in this community and its children. Teachers are evaluated using the Danielson Framework. Part of that framework is component 4E, growing and developing professionally, which clearly states that effective teachers must seek out opportunities for professional development, actively pursue professional learning and model lifelong learning for students. Keeping this framework in mind, I completed 15 hours through Idaho State University last spring. I submitted my transcript and lane change paperwork in June and HR acknowledged that all necessary paperwork was received. This summer, I completed another 15 hours and I submitted that transcript and another lane change paper in August, and again, HR acknowledged that everything was received. When I logged into iVisions and saw my lane listed as Masters plus 45, I was proud. I had put in the work on my own time, using my own money, balancing teaching and family life. But then, the day before the raise was supposed to happen, we were informed, not by the district, but by our union, that the district would not honor the coursework. No email from HR, no communication from Lincoln Center. After 28 years of dedicating my entire professional life to this district, that silence was devastating. More than 40 educators completed coursework through Idaho State University and suddenly, after all the work was done, the district decided that these courses don't count. Why wasn't anything said in June or in August? Why were the hours acknowledged, uploaded and visible in iVisions only to be reversed at the last possible moment? Tonight, I'm asking for fairness, honor our work, time, the money we invested, honor the lane change and honor your teachers. We upheld our end of the deal and we deserve the district to uphold theirs. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Rayanne Nickerson?
Hey, Rayanne Nickerson, I too, like Lynette, we went to high school together. Born and raised here in Waukegan, Andrew Cook, Jack Benny, Waukegan West High School. I've been teaching 29 years, 25 in Waukegan. I'm in the final phase of my career with five and a half years remaining. This makes the accuracy and the consistency of my compensation critical. Like many teachers, I also took the Idaho State because they're affordable. I could get them done on my own time. And I took them for lane changes. Teachers I personally know were granted these lane changes from this same program in February, March of this year. Last year, they were granted these lane changes. Yet, those of us who submitted for the fall, HR decided, we're going to pause it. My credits too appeared in iVisions, recorded and verified. I had every reason to expect my Masters plus 45 on my October 31st paycheck. We were blindsided on Thursday, October 30th, at 5:09 PM with an email from our union who notified us that HR told them the day before that they were pausing it. I don't know why it's paused. It seems like it was just because, I don't know if a number of us had put credits in, it was a lot of money, and they're like, oh, hold up, let us check it out. You've already approved these prior? It's not the first time. You can't just stop it while we're in the middle of it. What makes this even more unacceptable is that we have not been notified, the courses are graduate level. The only thing, like I said before, that changed was that it probably had to do with money. I don't know if he's investigating or they're investigating, whatever they think needs investigating. I heard it was contractual language. I have no idea because I have not been told. This discrepancy is indefensible, indefensible. The tactic is not only unfair, it directly violates expectations and timelines that we have followed in good faith. We have earned these lane changes. I worked hard all summer to make that cutoff of credits. I deserve it and HR should not have the authority to suspend a process that this district has repeatedly district has repeatedly honored. I also submitted my final 15 for my Masters plus 60 on the 28th of October. I'm expecting that in March of 2026. On what grounds is this being denied, is what I would like to know. Why didn't they notify us sooner? There are teachers in the bilingual department who are taking courses through Oklahoma Christian. Those are not being paused. This situation needs immediate correction. We expect our lane changes to be granted, and our retroactive pay issued without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson. Raye Vukovich?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to address the board on item 11C on your agenda. It's an item I spoke about the last time that it came before you. Has to do with the sale of property on Greenwood Avenue, formerly known as the Welcome Center. At that time, I questioned that you had a minimum bid of $900,000 for a building that this school district paid almost $1,200,000 18 years ago. And, you know, that's quite a drop. And now, what you're asking to do is to have no minimum bid. So theoretically, somebody could come in and pay $1,000 for that building? I mean, there's no minimum on there, as long as they qualify. I mean, what parameters do you have to make sure that that's the best use for the community? What if a private school comes in and offers you a minimum bid? Can you turn it down? Somebody that's going to compete with this school district? There's a lot of things there. You've got, brought to your attention also, that parking lot across from the high school that was a donation that this district spent $80,000 about 15 years ago to demolish a building and repave. And then, a couple of years ago, the board voted to lease it to a neighbor for about $100 a month. You know, that's taxpayer money, that it's gone. There's other property. You need to do a complete inventory of every piece of property in this district. Look at some of the school grounds you have to see if you ever need to add a building or can it be done? We just kind of hodgepodge and say, 18 years ago, we needed that building, now you don't need it. So, put that on hold and do a complete assessment of all the real estate this district owns. Because to just give it away now, if you could get $1 million for it, or half a million dollars, that goes a long way to help some of these schools that need improvements. You know that your list is always, what, 30, 40, 60 million dollars for the school improvement, physical improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vukovich. I just want to say for the record that the board has a right to reject the offers. We do not, we're not forced to accept any of the offers. You know? Okay, and that's it on the list. Thank you. Next item is consent agenda for academics. The consent agenda is a number of items that are lumped together for a single vote. These are items that have all been presented to the board at prior meetings and have been discussed, and the board has had opportunity to ask questions and discuss it in meetings. And at this point in time, they are considered to be non-controversial, and for that reason, they are being lumped together. So we have, on the academics consent agenda, we have three, it's like about eight, eight items. And I'd like to ask if anybody here is requesting that any of the items be separated out? I believe Ms. Hannah does.
Yes. I'd like to separate item B. Hold on that separately. And, Evan Koff.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, I just asked for the, if anyone wants to separate them out, okay.
Separate B.
Before I ask for the motion. Okay, so then, we're going to ask for a motion to approve all of the consent items, consent agenda items from A through H, with the exception of item B. Is that correct?
And E.
Oh, and you're asking for B?
B and E.
You want those voted on individually or lumped together as?
Individually.
Individually. Okay, so then, we are going to vote on all of the consent item, agenda items except for B and E. Does anybody else have any requests for separating any items? Okay, items that we're going to vote on then, and that I'm asking for motion for are A, Infinite Campus, Campus Workflow Add-on Product; C, Renewal of Branching Minds for Pre-K through 12; D, Attendance at National Science Teacher Association, NSDA Conference, Anaheim, California, April 14th through 19th, 2026; F, New Course Proposal at Waukegan High School, AP Research; G, AMLE Institute for Middle Level Learnership at Juarez Middle School; and Avid Summer Institute 2026 at Juarez Middle School. Do you have a motion to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle. Seconded by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on the motion?
I just would like to say that the consent agenda for academics is full of professional development. And later on in the meeting, I will talk about that, but the professional development, it's getting, it's becoming excessive.
Ms. Fabian?
So, the only thing I want to point out once again is ensuring that we have proper total estimated costs. We've talked about it before on your per diems, that the travel dates have a lower per diem than the days that you're in conference. And the only reason I want to highlight this is because those that are going on professional development, I don't want them overspending, thinking that they're going to get reimbursed when they are not going to be reimbursed at that rate. So whoever is looking at these documents, if they can check those things out, just to make sure that our staff understands what their limits are so that they don't go over them.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
I'm past.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Consent agenda items previously listed are approved. Next, we're looking for a motion to approve item B, Lewis Middle School, Italy and Germany and Belize trips. We have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Ms. Fabian?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Riddle. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I am, I love exposing children to everything. They deserve to be exposed to everything. However, in this current world climate, I don't think it's a good idea at this time. And the conference is pushed out until next year, and we still, we're just assuming that things will be different then. But my other concern is that trips overseas should be, should be held for high school students. And because middle schoolers, I'm not real sure if they're ready to do such an extensive trip like this. But that's just me. But also, also the, if the, if, if we introduce children to things too soon, what do they have to look forward? These kind of trips, again, should be for high school. Now, let me ask this one question, and hopefully, I can get an answer. The children that are going to be attending or participating in this trip, are they CPS? Is that how you say it?
The captain?
Yeah.
Yeah, the gap student? Are they the, are they the regular ed students? Just, I'm in.
Principal Schaper?
Yeah.
Would you please step up to the mic and shed some light?
Always love being here. Hi.
We love having you.
Thank you for the questions, Ms. Hannah. The students going on the trip, the trip is open to anyone at Lewis Middle School, and we also extend the trip to other middle schools as well. For some of the students, they also do trips later on in high school too. And the families appreciate the ability to start a little bit earlier. For some families, this is the right time to do it. They have other things coming up in a couple of years, and that might not be the same, the right time. I will say, we've been doing these trips for a couple of years now. They've always been very successful, and they are specifically geared toward middle school students, not toward high school students. So the agenda, the times, the places they visit, all are appropriate for middle school age students.
How many, how many chaperones do you take on a trip like that?
Usually, it's dependent on the number of students. And just so you know, we're talking less than 10 students on these trips. Like, we have seven who are interested in going to Italy. So they'll have one chaperone, the staff member who set up, set up the trip, and then a couple of parents or other staff members will go at some cost to themselves, they go with, to chaperone the trip at some cost.
Ms. Fabian, head her, hand her for a while.
Did you?
Go ahead.
It's okay, because I, I wrap up.
Okay, okay, well.
Trying to get through this without an hour of discussion.
Right, we're not going to do no hour. And so, the chaperones that are going are putting their own bill.
One chaperone gets a trip with seven kids, the other one's going to put their own bill. Yes, ma'am.
And you say 10 students?
Less than 10, seven are currently. This is the size of the trips, they're really small, but for the students who are interested, we like to offer them that experience.
So I'm going to try to help a little bit with this. So this is an educational company that works with school districts to set up educational learning trips for students, whether it's going to DC, Belize, or et cetera, right? So this is an educational company that sets this up, so.
And so we, there's insurance involved with it, it's all included in everything. So, the safety, any kind of refunds, if something happens internationally, all that's taken care of. There are experts doing this trip, not just me.
You're our expert.
Let me finish, I'm going to finish with this. Are you aware that there were, that there have been incidents with the tour, with some tour company? I don't know the name of it. And they had arranged a big tour for the students in the schools, and parents were paying, students were fundraising, the whole thing, and they found out that it was all a scam.
This school company, EF Tours, you can do your research, they're really a longtime company, and we have not had any problem with them. I don't know of any problem with anyone with this tour company. They're really top notch and have a history of proven success.
Now, Ms. Fabian?
So, real quick, for me, my only issue is, again, just making sure that parents are fully informed of all of the, and aware of, of everything that's going on in this world so that they can make an informed decision. However, as a parent, that's their decision to make. I know I've traveled abroad with my kid as young as one year old, right? So I never think that, I don't think that it's ever too soon for you to take your child out, yeah, they, they have to have their passports. I never think that it's too soon to take your child out into the world. I think it gives them a worldly view. Most other countries do travel amongst each other and learn each other's culture and language, and for whatever reason, this country, I think that's one of the things or areas that we're lacking as a society. So I don't ever want to pull away student opportunity when we can give it to them, because in some cases, this might be the most affordable way that a family can send their child. It is costly, but it may be more costly to go as a whole family, and it's more structured where they are going to get to get into all of those different tour sites without having to try to go months in advance and make that schedule and all of that. So I personally think middle school is a great time to go. We could take them sooner, I would. It gives you a lot of background knowledge when you're doing literature, when you're doing social studies, history, and all of that. They can make more connections when they're there hands on, actually visiting these places. So for me, it's a great experience for our students, because then they're able to take all of that knowledge that they actually saw upfront and connect the dots more easily than had they not gone and done that experience. I wish it was more affordable so that more of our students could go, because I'm sure you would have more than the seven, had it been a lower reduced price, but I understand. So again, for me, it's just a matter of making sure that our families are fully informed of the risks during this federal climate so that they know the process and protocols should anything happen.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian. We have a roll call vote.
Thanks, Molly.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Absolutely.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve item E, Attendance at National Art Education Conference in Chicago, Illinois, March 4th through 7th, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion?
Is this the conference where the teachers or whoever were participating, they were receiving the, the $500 per diem? Is that this group?
I think so.
Uh-uh. It says 322 over the four days.
Okay, so if A, right, if A.
This conference is being held in Chicago from March 4th through the 7th.
Right, but we had, we had a presentation, and the, the area superintendent told us that, that per diem were $50.
Ms. Hannah, was that last student achievement meeting? Let me, Ms. Maluski?
Good evening, board and members of the community. If I may, there was a professional development request for an overseas trip for some members of a team at Washington Elementary School for a trip in Tokyo, Japan. We have not completed to bring that one back yet at this point in time, so you're not voting on that at this time. This is a separate, a different professional development. We did not bring that back at this point in time.
The one that I'm talking about?
The one you're referring to, we have not yet brought back for approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
No.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, item 11, Consent Agenda. Once again, this is a, an agenda, a list of items, or five items, that have been presented to the board before. We've had a chance to review them and discuss them and ask questions and get our questions answered. And at this point, they're considered non-controversial and are being presented as one item so that we can vote on them altogether. Is there any request to separate out any of the items? Please speak into your microphone.
Yes, I'd like to separate B and D.
Ms. Hannah is requesting that we separate out items B and D. Did you want to vote on B and D together as one vote? Do you want separate votes on each one? Okay, so what we're looking for is a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, C, and E. Item A is FY26 Bulk Paper Order. C is Approval of Sale of Real Property Located at 742 Greenwood Avenue, Formerly Welcome Center. And E is Approval to Amend Board And E is approval to amend board agenda. Item, attendance and National School Boards Association 2025 Cube Conference, May 27th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we are looking for a motion to approve, uh, item B, the approval of child nutrition consultant agreement with Walker Quality Services LLC.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Now, we're looking for a motion to approve item D, which is approval of architect agreement with Crimson Design and Construction for the Lewis Middle School Kitchen Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Hannah?
I certainly hope that this is not the roundabout way to, um, not put this out for a bid. Um, because this was the, uh, concern when this, um, when this came up before. Now, this, it says it's just for the architect.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I don't know what this $50,430 is. But I certainly hope that this is not the backdoor way to get this, um, project started without a B.
I apologize, my mic was off. I'm gonna ask our general counsel to speak to this because she has looked into this and she can give us some clarification around this.
Sure. Um, the project, the construction component of this project will go out to bid under this, the standard bid rules. Under the Local Government Professional Services Selection Act, that sets up a RFP process by which we can select architects of record. But it also has a waiver process of that procedural competition. As long as the total value of the contract for that architect service in this case would fall under what at this point is a approximately just a little over $50,000 figure. And this contract does fall under that. So that's the explanation for the board recognizing that and waiving the competition set up in that statute. But it is, it's not a backdoor way to avoid bidding. The construction component will still be bid.
Any further discussion?
And there is no.
Go ahead, Hannah.
And so there, there's no question with, or no concern with our architects of rec. Um, with, with this, um, item. Because it's a different architect, but we have architect of record.
Mr. Moen's in the back shaking his head, no.
Exclamation, elaboration?
He's saying no.
Yes, so Ms. Hannah, um, our architects of record, uh, are aware of this and there is no concern for them for us to waive the, the requirement to have Crimson Denying and Construction do the architects or services for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Moen.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 12, purchases and contracts, I see none. 13 personnel items.
It is the recommendation at the Board of Education, accept the administration's recommendation to approve the. To approve? To approve the appointments, retirement, and accept the resignations and terminations as found on schedules F1002, L949, G660, and T317. Except for the last name on schedule T317, terminations, non-certified staff. Last name, Paola Pineda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Ramirez. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 14, grants and donations.
We're not there at this point. There was, there was earlier an ask to separate out the last name for a separate vote. So if the superintendent could read that, please.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the administration's recommendation to ter, for the termination of the last name as found on schedules T317, non-certified staff.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries.
And that involves Ms. Paola Pineda.
Okay, uh, number 16, financial reports, ratification of the second processing of November 2025 board bills, manual check request payments, and old national bank insurance payments for the period of November 5th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education ratify the 2nd November 2025 of board bills, manual check request payments, and old national bank insurance payments for the period of November 5th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025. The accounts payable board payments for the period of November 5th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025 total $1,200, $20241.22. The manual check request payments for the period of number 5th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025 total $38,798.59. Though national bank insurance payments for the period of November 5th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025 total $0.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, reports and presentations, do we have any committee reports? Ms. Fabian?
Uh, just real quick, the AI Committee, uh, has been meeting to start that new policy. Our copyright committee is going over that as well to, uh, review that, which hasn't been done in quite some time. As we're reading through, we're seeing old technology. Um, and then the PTAC also met, which is the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, uh, November 13th to start talking about the policy on student technology use. I was happy to see that more people attended. Um, the next meeting is going to be December 18th at Juarez at 4:30. Again, um, for the PTAC, I would love to see more parents come out and community members, um, join that and, and really, um, look at some of those student policies. And that is all.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, um, um, we did have our first capital, uh, improvement meeting. And it basically was going over the, um, the, um, the, the procedures and the welcoming and, you know, all of that. And we'll get into more, um, in-depth stuff, I'm sure, at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, delegates reports?
Uh, just, uh, quick, um, quick reminder that, um, Triple I is this week. Um, the end of this week. And, uh, I have not received any responses for the resolutions um, that the, um, board would want me to vote yea or nay on. So if you hit me that before, um, for, I must say, Friday at the latest.
The meeting is Saturday, correct?
The meeting is Saturday at 10:00 AM. The delegates. Yeah.
Sorry, the resolutions were sent to us, right? Okay.
Uh, and if, then no, and I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, that's important because, um, there's gonna be, I, I don't want to misspeak, but the, uh, literacy coalition is gonna be there. And we're gonna, uh, the news is gonna be.
Okay.
Ms. Hannah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Alajakis to work with you tomorrow so he can get that out to the board members so that they can have that from you.
They should have gotten.
We'll just resend it, just to put it on top of their email. So, uh, Mr. Alajakis will reach out to you tomorrow and we'll get it to all board members.
Right, it was sent out September 8th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, you got it?
No, if they could resend.
They can resend it though.
Okay.
Can resend it.
Okay, Superintendent's report?
At this time, I'd like to, um, ask Ms. Maluski, um, to come up. We will be discussing the 2024-25 state designations and our state district report card. Dr. Brown, is he coming up with you?
Good evening, Board. We, uh, Dr. Jonathan Brown and I will be presenting, um, a recorded presentation of our 2024 ISBE designations and our end of year data. And so we will ask that if you could kindly listen to our presentation and then we will be available for questions.
And I apologize, Dr. Brown, I didn't see you back there.
He's here. He's hiding up by the wall.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be presenting, um, two presentations combined into one where we review the 2024-25 ISBE school designations and the end of year data that drives those designations. Tonight, I, Amanda Maluski, will be presenting alongside Dr. Jonathan Brown. As we begin to dive into our designation information and our end of year student data, we want to be reminded of our mission and vision. We also want to be reminded of our core beliefs that help guide our daily actions. The following information is new from the state of Illinois. It was published on October 30th, 2025. And this information will cover the 2024-25 ESA designations. First, we'll cover some definitions and metrics. For the ESA designations, schools based on their performance in a variety of categories are categorized into one of five ESA designations. The top 10% of schools across the whole state are considered exemplary. The next level is considered commendable, where no student groups are underperforming. The third level is considered targeted support, where the school's overall score is commendable, but may have one or more underperforming student groups. The fourth level is considered comprehensive. And that's where the overall is, overall score is considerably lower than the commendable range and also has multiple student groups who are underperforming. And lastly, the category, that is, the fifth category is intensive support, which is the lowest 5% of schools statewide. These categories and designations are determined by multiple different measures, which we will cover on the next slide. For our elementary and middle schools, you can see the types of data that are pulled for the ESA calculations on the left side of your screen. It's a combination of reading and math proficiency on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, a combination of reading and math growth on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, English learner progress towards proficiency, science proficiency, as well as chronic absenteeism and climate survey participation. For the high school, the metrics that are used for the calculations are on the right side of the screen. A portion is considered for reading and math proficiency on the ACT, graduation rate, English learner progress towards proficiency, science proficiency, chronic absenteeism, ninth grade on track, and climate survey. Some highlights from this information for our designations for the 24-25 include strong results on the five essentials. We've had nine schools improve their scores and the district increased growth across all areas of the five essentials. We're proud of our graduation rate having increased for consecutive years. Our diverse learners inclusion rates continue to rise, meaning more students have access to grade level curriculum with their peers. For our English language learners, our access scores and overall English proficiency have improved. In academic achievement, our eighth grade Algebra I passing rates are up significantly since 2024. And our district's average daily attendance has gone up and our chronic absenteeism and tardiness are down. Here is a look at some of our school's designations for the 24-25 school year. You can see 23, 24, and 25 going across for each school. So you can see how they have performed over time. And on the far right column, you can see their overall score and any identified student groups who need additional support at that particular school. The next slides cover the same information for more of our elementary schools. Again, you can see the three years of designation across the columns to see the pattern between 23, 24, and 25 and the growth. As well as you can see in the far right column, their overall score and any identified student groups who need additional support at that particular school. The last slide right here covers our middle schools and our high school. We'd like to congratulate all of our commendable recipients, including Clark Clearview Cook, Glenwood Greenwood Hyde Park, Little Fort Lion McCall, Washington Elementary School, and Waukegan High School. One of the important pieces that we use this data for is to dig into the scores in each category or each part of the house. And then we are able to look for areas of strength, look at where we have scooped up points for different aspects that we are accountable for and where we fell short in terms of opportunities for growth. And we can also filter by student group to see which students are finding more or less success. On the example on your screen, this particular school got full points for their climate survey. They got strong points towards their ELPTP. They received about half of the points for their proficiency in both reading and in math. Had much smaller growth in ELA and math. Did not have a lot of science proficiency yet. And had about half of the points available for chronic absenteeism. So knowing these scores in mind and seeing where the school had some successes and areas of next steps, it helps the area superintendent, the academic team, and the principal and their instructional leadership team dive into this data, identify which students need more support and what school-wide strategies they will use to help support student learning. In terms of next steps, every school has the opportunity to meet with ISBE to review their data, discuss areas of need and growth, and establish actions. Schools that are considered comprehensive are required to participate in monthly coaching meetings with ISBE, identify a state-approved learning partner, and participate in a needs assessment. The academic team works on ensuring that principals and their ILTs and grade level teams are working on providing supports and interventions for students. We have recently provided training to all principals on access data to ensure that they are looking at this data point and supporting their students who are English language learners. We check in with each principal on student groups and specific. We check in with each principal on student groups and specific actions and supports that are being taken at the school level, and we progress monitor student performance using our Tier One assessments. The next few slides will be Dr. Jonathan covering the raw data and the outcomes from the IAR, the pre-ACT, and the ACT, as well as covering some other important data that help shape the designations that we just covered.
Thank you, Ms. Maluski. Now, let's take a look at how our students performed on the 2025 state assessments for grades three through 11. With each student performance presentation, we start with a look at our students' attendance at each level and across the district. The data here reflect attendance through the end of the year for each of the years shown. Our students continue to attend school at higher rates each year. Our district average last year was above 90%. In addition to monitoring the regularity of student attendance, teams track and take closer notice of students that have excessive absences. The state defines chronic absenteeism as being absent 10% or more of the school year regardless of the reason. Our chronic absenteeism rates over the years show a positive trend, with last year's rate dropping to just under 35%. Freshman on track is a metric that we report because it is closely linked to our graduation rate. The rates listed are from the official report card. At the end of the year, students identified as on track have earned at least five full-year course credits. That's 10 semester credits, and have earned no more than one semester F in a core course. A core course is with English, Math, Science, or Social Science. Our freshman on track metric is nearing 70%, continuing an upward trend. Our four-year graduation rate is currently just below 84% and has also been trending upwards with an almost 10 percentage point increase since 2022. Our first state test results come from our English proficiency exam, the access test. Students participate in this exam yearly until they achieve the comprehensive proficiency performance level of 4.8. Each year, students' progress towards achieving that proficiency level is monitored with an assigned growth target. Students that meet or exceed that yearly growth target are on track to achieve the proficiency score within five years. Two years of growth target performance are shown here. Across the district in grades K through eight, 42% of students met their growth target in the last year compared to 38% the previous year. Five elementary schools increased the percentage of students meeting their target. Here are the first eight elementary schools. Here are the seven remaining elementary schools. While our middle schools' ELPTP growth has lagged behind our elementary schools, last year, all five of our middle school students showed tremendous growth towards proficiency. All five schools more than doubled the percentage of students meeting their growth target. Earlier this year, the Illinois State Board of Education completed the process of setting new cut scores for our state assessments. These new cut scores determining performance levels were created to provide more uniformity across the assessments. As you can see, prior to this process, performance levels for our main assessments were different. Now, going forward, they are all in alignment utilizing the same four performance levels. The State Board of Education will begin to use these results as a new baseline for measuring student performance. They will not go back to recap, recalibrate previous year's test scores. District schools are listed, excuse me, on the next few slides in the order of performance. Here we have our Illinois Science Assessment results using the new performance levels. Four of our elementary schools have 40% or more of their students scoring proficient or above. Seven elementary schools scored above the district proficiency rate. Now our middle schools. High school data will be presented later. Although the state isn't going backwards applying the new performance levels, we are able to see a measure of growth between 2024 and 2025 for our students using the growth percentile measure the state provides. The growth percentile for a student is a ranking of their growth when compared to students across the state that were in the same grade with similar starting scores. Average growth is typically around the 50th percentile. Students with growth percentiles above that have above-average growth. Students with growth percentiles below that have below-average growth. School growth percentiles are the average growth percentile for all students in the school. Here we show both math and ELA growth percentiles for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IAR. Across the district on the IAR, our students' average was the 43rd percentile in math and the 40th percentile in ELA. Four of our schools achieved average growth percentiles above 50 in the, at least one subject area. Those four schools are on the screen now. Clark, Littlefort, Lyon, Magnet, and Whittier. Here are our middle schools. Now turning to our ELA results by grade level, we see that across the district, about a quarter of students in grades three through eight attained scores that were proficient or above. Grades three, five, and eight attained higher than the district proficiency rate on the ELA assessment. Of our noted student groups, four out of nine performed better than the district proficiency rate of 24.6. District schools are listed on the next few slides in order of ELA performance. Four of our elementary schools have 40% or more of their students scoring proficient or above. Seven elementary schools scored above the proficiency rate. Here are eight more elementary schools. And finally, our five middle schools. Moving on to IAR math results, we see across the district about 19% of students earning proficient or above scores last spring. Three grade levels, all elementary, performed above the district proficiency rate. Of our noted student groups in math, four out of the nine performed better than the district proficiency rate of 18.7. District schools are again listed in order of performance on the IAR math assessment. Ten of our 15 elementary schools' students earned scores above the district's proficiency rate. Here are our remaining seven elementary schools. And finally, our middle schools. Our last dataset will be our high school assessment performance from the pre-ACT and ACT using the new ISB performance levels. The ACT assessments are divided into four subject areas: English, Reading, Science, and Math, with a required external writing prompt component. As with the IAR, the state reports math and ELA results. Although the performance levels changed for this administration, the state still provides growth percentile figures, which you see here. The 50th percentile is average growth across the state. Our school average was slightly above the state average in ninth grade math and approaching the state average in ninth and 11th grade ELA. Here we have the results, excuse me, here we have results using the new performance levels for students in grades nine, 10, and 11 in ELA, Math, and Science. More students scored proficient in ELA than in Math or Science across the three grades. Grade 11 students showed higher levels of proficiency in Math and Science compared to students in grades nine and 10. Here are ELA results for the grade 11 ACT by student group. Our math results for the grade 11 ACT by student group. And our grade 11 ACT science results by student group. So what are some impactful actions that are planned to enhance learning? We are laser-focused on high-quality Tier One instruction. We will continue to provide all teachers with high-quality instructional materials. We will review and refine common pacing guides for a guaranteed and viable career. And we will support the development of strong instructional leadership teams, or ILTs. Please reach out with any questions you may have, and thank you for joining us for this presentation.
Ms. Hannah.
I have one question, Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown, you knew Ms. Hannah was going to have a question for you.
I was waiting. I wasn't going to leave. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Um, just a question. Now, all the scores that were presented, were presented in correlation with the new proficiency cut scores, right?
Yes.
And make me understand totally the the proficiency cut scores are lower than they were before.
They've changed the scale scores to be slightly lower, yes.
Okay. Right, I understand.
Yes. ELA and math versus science.
Right, and so, now, I did, okay, that was the one question. Second question, you were, you were presenting with the district. Like, the schools in the district.
Yes.
What about, you did not compare the scores? Or if we were getting close to the state? You just did the district.
Right.
You did not compare to the state.
For, for the, um, test scores.
Mm-hmm.
The only comparison to the state was with the growth, uh, uh, percent, percentiles. But, you're right, the other performance levels, those were not compared to what the state averages were. And that's primarily due to the timing of when the data comes out on the report card and when we thought we were going to do the presentation.
I'm sorry, can you expound on that more? I just, because I talk about the embargo and so they understand what the holdup.
So the report card didn't come out until October 30th, I think, when it was officially able to be released. We thought that we were going to do our presentation, uh, close to that time. So we prepared it quite a little, uh, uh, a while ago. Okay, and usually when we have the, uh, presentation, we will have a state data file that will tell us about all different other school districts and, and how the state performed, but we just didn't have that to put it into the presentation at that time.
And so, Superintendent, are we gonna get an updated presentation? Because we can't just let this stand, because, like, it's, like, incomplete.
You are specifically asking, uh, for our K through eight, they performed at this particular level. How does that compare to the state, K through eight? We can.
And, and also with the, um, with the, uh, A and I, well, all of them.
Can you please update the presentation with that minute?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian.
And I do want to clarify, the report card designations themselves are a comparison. So, when they're receiving, you know, commendable, targeted, et cetera, it's because they are being compared to every single school district within the district. So, that also kind of tells us where, I mean, within the state, sorry. So that also tells us where our schools are falling in comparison to the entire state.
With, to.
Within, yeah, because the, yeah, the proficiency metrics raised were raised for everybody, so.
Also.
Well, for science, they were, no, for science, they were raised, for ELA and math, they were lowered. But that was changed for everybody, so the comparison still stands.
Does that help?
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Maluski.
Thank you. Some really exciting, uh, information in that report.
If I may, we do have our principals in the audience tonight.
And I was just going to say that. I was just going to mention that we have a lot of principals and, um, just want to commend all of you because there's so much great progress that has taken place and so much good, good things that are happening in the district. So, um, you all deserve a lot of credit for all that you're doing and continue to do. And, uh, Ms. Maluski and Dr. Brown, anytime you want to have a report like this with so much positive information, feel free to, to do it, because we really like to get this good, this good feedback.
Absolutely. Thank you to the principals for being here tonight and for the work that you've done this past year. We would like to honor our schools who received commendable status. We did, uh, provide them with a banner, and so we'd like for, to call up our schools, our school principals to receive their banner, and, uh, when you hear your school and your name, please come on up. Uh, Mr. Daniel Hill and Mr. Eric Hamilton, Principal's Waukegan High School.
All right.
Dr. Anzon, Principal Lyon Magnet Elementary School.
I would be remiss if I did not say Dan Hill was Principal of the Year for Lake County Regional Principal. Am I correct? Big shout out again. Ms. Amy Grossman, Principal Littlefort Elementary School. Mr. Jason Sigalak, Principal Washington Elementary School. Ms. Carol May is not here tonight, but Ms. Carol May, Principal McCall Elementary School. Ms. Joyce Meyer, Principal Greenwood Elementary School. Ms. Gladys Rodriguez, Principal Clark Elementary School. Mr. Brian Carr, Principal Hyde Park Elementary School. Ms. Cabrino Williams-Lanu, Principal Glenwood Elementary School. Dr. Stephanie Jensen is not in attendance, but congratulations, Cook Magnet Elementary School. And Mr. Jose Salazar, Principal Clearview Elementary School. Thank you again, principals, for all your work. We appreciate your diligence. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance this evening. Thank you.
Have to be up early to receive children in the morning. So please do not feel obligated to stay to the end of the meeting. We want you all to get your rest. And we do understand you had an early start to your day. So thank you for all you do. Can we give them all a round of applause?
All right, that was very uplifting.
Very nice, very nice.
All right, moving on to item eighteen, information items, FOIA report, October twenty twenty five.
This report summarizes the FOIA work done last month.
Thank you. Number nineteen, old business, I seen on
Wait, wait, wait.
Ms. Hannah?
Well, I know, I don't know, Mr. President, if this if this qualifies for old business, but I think it does. The past meeting, Mr. McBride asked for for the total amount of monies for professional development. And I am just doing a follow-up to make sure that that is being worked on. And if I could just maybe add some things, Superintendent?
Can, can I just address the first thing? Yes. So Ms. Polk did send me something, I believe it was today. And so we are still looking at it, so it, Ms. Polk has been working on it, and we will get it to the board once we button it all up, which I can foresee by the end of the week.
Well, I'm not I'm not trying to rush anybody or put put more work on anybody. I know this is the conference week.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and so it's the conference week, and so I'm not even expecting it.
Ms. Hannah, thank you. We would need till next week. I did forget we were going to triple I this week.
Right, and so if I can ask Superintendent, with that information, can you separate or show the board the regular professional development? Local and board pay professional development versus grant? That professional development are required from the grant? And if we could get that separated?
Ms. Hannah, I want to ask Ms. Polk, is, Ms. Polk, is that feasible? Do you understand the request? Please? And then if it's labor intensive, we may need to know so that we can get a consensus from the board. I just, I want consent, when, just for clarity purposes?
Oh, it's okay.
I apologize. I didn't want to jump into board president's lane. But one of our agreements is that when it's labor intensive, that the board as a whole would say, yes, we want this, or no. It's just a protocol procedure. It's not because of any individual ask, but when it's labor intensive, that question is posed to the board for a yea or nay. So I will turn it over to you, and you can please let us know if that's labor intensive or what that looks like for your department.
Yes, Board President, Board members, Superintendent, colleagues, and community members. At this juncture, it would be labor intensive because we've pulled the data based upon the names and where they went for travel. We didn't particularly pull the account numbers. What we could do is to go into the grants and see what allocations were approved for PD. But I would say that it would be extremely labor intensive for us to go back and to replicate the work that we've already done.
So, Board President, I'll differ to you. Is that a request for the board? Do we have a consensus on?
Can you tell me exactly what it is that you would have to do, what the breakdown would be?
We would have to literally go through our ledger and pull the travel requests that have been approved and include the account numbers. What we did, we maintain a spreadsheet right now with all of the requests for credit card usage, but we typically don't include, like, the account numbers on that spreadsheet. And we also have a ledger of everyone who requests reimbursement. But again, that ledger doesn't include account numbers. So we would literally have to go line by line inside of our financial system and pull expenditures and sift through it to extract travel.
If you were to assign that to a person tomorrow to pull that information, how long would it take? How many days, weeks?
I would say that work coupled with the work that they already have, I would say maybe, maybe three to four weeks.
Okay, at this point in time, then we have to ask the board if, and I'm gonna let everybody has a hand up speak. Have to ask the board if they feel that having this information justifies the amount of manpower that it would take to do this, and also pulling the individuals that would do the work away from the work that they already have to do. So Ms. Fabiana had her hand up.
I just, so when we do the presentations, it usually has the account numbers, and it's usually noted if it's a grant or not. So for me, I'm okay. When we've had, like, PDs on the PowerPoint presentation that they make, because I know that that wasn't asked that Ms. Lensing had to put what account number and if it's coming from school-based grant, et cetera. So for me, I'm okay, but I don't know if it's something that in the future on your ledger, since it's already being put on those presentations, if you could just put, like, school-based grant, whatever, moving forward. So then it's not taxing on your department.
Yes. For the board. So Ms. Polk, what I'm hearing is that moving forward, you can put some identifiable number or whatever, fund line or whatever, so that we can in the spreadsheet, yes. Yes, so you will be able to track in the future, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Because, yeah, I just want to know, okay, when, okay, why wouldn't we know whether professional development was in the science grant? Right? So it's the science grant. How much professional development was for the science grant? That's what I'm talking about. I'm not sure labor intensive, but we do know what grants we get, right?
Yes.
And so we also should know within those grants, we know that those grants say a required amount of professional development. It's required in that grant. So I'm not understanding the intensity of getting this information. And I keep hearing this, it keeps driving me crazy because of all the millions of dollars that we have spent on technology, on the ERP system. Where everything is talking to each other, but we have to spend an exorbitant amount of time, get labor intensive gathering this data. It does not
Let me help you.
Work.
Okay, let me help you. First of all, our ledger does capture the source of funds. And that's assuming, that's assuming that when the requests are put into the system, they're utilizing the correct accounts. We do have account codes that would capture professional development. But if the correct account is not utilized, then normally throughout the year, Mr. Lewosa and the rest of my team have to reconcile and move those charges to the right line. Another thing is the reimbursements are not always paid to individuals. Sometimes they're paid to the credit card company. And that too has to be reconciled from paying the credit card to crediting the grant. So right now, Mr. Lewosa, before I came here, we're reconciling some of the, some of the grants to make sure that the appropriate charges are charged to the grants. This is not abnormal. It is a normal practice. But again, for us to really be able to go in, we capture all expenses. That's something that we pride ourselves in. But to say, we could certainly provide a report to you and pull it as it is, but we can't assure you that it's capturing a hundred percent of the travel cost. We would have to put a disclaimer on that until we can actually do reconciliation.
I said professional development.
It's, yes, that's what I mean. Travel PD.
Mr. Riddle.
Yeah.
Yes. Some of you, some of you may be aware of the problems that Cook County is having, or that the Chicago school system is having regarding this, and they had some scandal or some, you know, the attorney, the inspector general rose some, you know, some concerns about travel to foreign countries and other such places and resort areas. And they have suspended their travel for the rest of the year pending further investigation. But I'm just curious if we could not just get a how much has been spent this school year that was approved, whether it was actually spent or not, just looking through board docs and seeing how much was actually approved for travel? That would be, would that give us what we are needing instead of trying to that would give us an idea of how much has been approved for travel? It may not all have been spent because we know that, you know, we normally budget more or approve more than is actually spent. You know, they may get a cheaper rate or whatever. Would that satisfy the board's questions? It would be, seem to me, it would be easy to just go back and look at how much was spent maybe last year and how much was spent or approved last year and how much was approved this year from our board docs.
I do believe, I do believe Ms. Polk has that already prepared, and we are ready to send that out. So that's what I said I received today, so Ms. Polk has prepared that already.
Trying to get a word in here.
To Mr. Riddle's point, that's not where I'm coming from. Cook County was taking traveling trips. They was taking limousines when they got there, taking safari trips. They were doing everything else what they shouldn't have been doing. I am just asking overall for a total budget. I'm, Ms. Hannah had her opinion about separating things, that's okay, but I mean, I was looking at a total budget where you can really get the scope of what you're really looking at in terms of what you're spending for travel. I think
For travel PD.
Period, yeah, period.
So we'll have to pull the budget number, but what we've provided to the superintendent today was all of the approved travel for twenty twenty five, FY twenty five and FY twenty six to date.
And that's in-state and out-of-state, correct?
All PD, all travel.
We didn't go, we didn't do a year because we're not even done with twenty twenty five.
FY twenty five.
FY twenty four, twenty five.
We're done with FY twenty five.
We're done with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, did we go back to twenty three?
No, we didn't go back to twenty three. We went back, yeah, July one of twenty twenty four through June of twenty twenty five, and then one July to date.
That would Yeah, my opinion is that would just give us a starting point. We can then go on it if we need more data, but for now, that would just give Would that not answer your question, Mr. McBride?
Again, I just think it's transparency, just where, you know, the board can actually really see what we're spending, period. And then, you know, to Ms. Hannah's point, I get where she's coming from, but sometime you have to see it to really understand it, because, you know, you're coming in, you're spending three thousand dollars for a travel, but you're doing it all year long. It adds up, you know? And I just think, you know, we just need to see what we're doing, period. But I'm going back to the Chicago, and we ain't nowhere near doing what they were doing.
No, absolutely not.
I do want to state that when we, when we're bringing professional development, it has been budgeted for what, within schools budgets, et cetera. So all this, we've already approved in our budget adoption that we had at the beginning of the year. So I just want the public to understand that. So we will get those numbers to the board. Why don't you look at what we send you some, not this week, next week? And then, once you see what's before you, we can come up with some other questions to see if we could solve for that. Does that sound like a plan? Thank you, Ms. Polk.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiana, you have a comment?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Polk. All right, that was old business?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, we have one item that was bold. This is the approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Waukegan and Waukegan School District on the Emergency Response Services. And that has to be approved by Waukegan City Council, and I believe they're waiting for the police chief to review it and give his, and weigh in on it. Okay, twenty one, student discipline matter. Yes, please.
Just to add a clarification, the city did approve it.
Just to add a clarification, the city did approve it subject to the police chief's review. He did make a couple of suggested modifications that their attorney is still reviewing and we're waiting to get that back so that we're both ending up approving similar language. So this will come back and we're hopeful it'll be done by the next board meeting.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, 21, student discipline matters? We have a student discipline agreement for student number XXX222.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the student discipline agreement regarding student XXX222 and authorize the Board President to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. A discussion on the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, item 22, board member time. Let's start with, uh, Ms. Allen.
Hey, hi, everyone. Um, so, uh, the Italy trip, I feel like that would be like a good exposure for like middle schoolers to like give them an idea of like that, like outside of the United States and possibly encourage them to pursue an education outside of the country. So I feel like that, that's a good idea and I really hope that it does, you know, feed into other middle schools because I would have loved to like, you know, experience that. I feel like that would be fun. Um, uh, and then that's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hakobu?
About the same thing about this, uh, proposal of new field trip. Uh, I personally, in my opinion, say that it's, it's a very good idea to introduce this to the middle schoolers to further expand their viewpoints. Um, I hopefully get to see more of this coming up. I'll be on.
Thank you. Mr., no, Ms. Ramirez.
Hello, and thank you, everyone, again. Um, I want to excuse my absence for last week, but, um, I, I really appreciate allowing me to call in though I did have some technical difficulties at the end. Uh, but, um, I'd really like to thank you. Tomorrow, we have a face advisory meeting, so I'm um, looking forward to, um, to that. Um, it's getting cold, so families, please remember to buckle, uh, button up and, uh, always remember that there are, uh, ways and means if your family is in need of, quote, that, um, let somebody know. Do not, um, send our kids out now that the temperature is dropping without what they need. Please, um, let a teacher, a social worker, someone know so that we can assist and help your family, um, obtain those items for when.
Thank you. Mr. Riddle?
Um, yes, I would just second, um, what our two student board members said, uh, regarding travel. I have traveled to, um, a number of those places, uh, in Europe that, uh, the students are going to visit. Um, and I can tell you, it was the first time out of the country and it made history come alive. And I was much older than middle school or high school. Uh, it was compliments of, um, Uncle Sam that took me over to Europe, but, uh, it
With the sacrifice of yours.
Indeed was an education because seeing things, uh, you know, I had studied about the Romans and castles in England and stuff and actually seeing those things, um, made a big difference. And, and meeting the people that lived in those communities. So yes, it's wonderful. It's a wonderful education. Any child or student or family that can support their student in doing that, um, please by all means do it. Um, and then I am looking forward to our triple I conference later this week. Um, uh, we'll be meeting with, uh, thousands of, uh, school board members, uh, and staff from around Illinois. It's always a great opportunity, uh, to, um, participate and learn what they are doing and hear the speakers. Um, so I've already got some seminars picked out that I want to, uh, go into and I'm pleased that one of our student board members is going to be along too. Frankie, thank you. Um, we hope to see you there and that you'll come back excited. And then, um, thanks all to all of our, uh, principals, um, who earned awards and those who didn't, um, because they worked very hard to, uh, enrich the lives of all of our students. So thank you for all the hard work you do and your staff and a, and a blessed Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Mr. McBride?
Happy Tuesday.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah?
Um, just want to, uh, first shout out from me to all of my board members, colleagues. This is, um, uh, board member week. And so congratulations to all of us
All right.
and what we do. And I also would like to shout out, uh, the ROE because they send, um, a board, um, board member, uh, appreciation to, to all the board members. So that's what, all I had.
Ms. Fabian?
So the Rising Nine is tomorrow at Brookside from 6 to 8. So I'm kind of, uh, happy and sad since it'll be my last bulldog in, in my household going. Um, so if you have a student that is going to enter the high school next year, please be sure to check that out so you can learn about the clubs and all the different courses that they can take. And if your child is in high school, remember that they should be looking at courses to select for next year. Um, I also, uh, want to remind the board, you know, in public comment, we talked about inventorying the district for properties. We did receive that spreadsheet with the inventories of all the properties that the district does own, so that should be in your emails. Um, and then I would also like to encourage Ms. Schaefer, if she could let us know the fundraising, um, whatever the fundraising opportunities are for the students, if she could share that with us so we can also help them fundraise to get them, um, into those trips. And then lastly, I just want to say, I, um, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I am very grateful to serve and for the support of our, our community. Um, and I'm very grateful for our staff, our students, our families and especially those of you who come to these board meetings and watch them online and really, um, spread the word and the work that we're doing. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian. And we received an email from the Illinois Association of School Boards on Saturday, November 15th, that says, uh, thank you for your board service. Uh, Saturday was School Board Members Day. And, uh, I think all the school board members received this email. Um, I'd just like to say a little bit about, um, professional development. You know, we want the best for our students. We want them to have the best education possible. We want them to succeed. And one of the ways that we can help to make them succeed is by having the best possible teachers teaching them. Waukegan is very fortunate to have some of the best teachers anywhere. We are really very fortunate. I've, I know so many of the teachers in this district and they're really dedicated and devoted to their jobs and to, and to just developing and, and teaching our students. The way to keep educators at the top of their game is to provide professional development. And this means seminars, this means trips, this means spending some money to keep them at the top of their game, keep training them, developing them. I realize that we're expecting that when we hire all the individuals that we hire, that they're supposed to be experts in their field and should have those skills coming in. But, you know, things change and people need constant, constant tune-ups, let's say, or reminders and, and constant exposure to new ideas and new concepts and, and just other, other ideas, other ways of doing things. And, you know, we have the right to question the money that we're spending for professional development, but we also have to be very careful because sometimes our discussions here become very negative. And, and it almost looks as if, that sometimes, uh, teachers and motives are being questioned and, and, uh, principals' motives for, for sending their, their teacher, sending their staff for professional development. And it, it, sometimes I get the feeling that they're almost being made to feel guilty for, for doing what they're doing, for going on a trip. Okay, some of these trips are in, maybe in nice places, you know? But, um, uh, we just have to be very careful because this can be a very demoralizing thing for, for teachers and staff to feel that, that they're, they're being made to feel that they're doing something wrong by going on a, on a trip or by going to a conference and spending school district money. Well, you know, that is, that is part of what we have to do to provide a good education for our students. We have to keep our educators, and that means everybody, yeah, keep them educated. Right, exactly.
Got it.
So, you know, we, yeah, we need to know how much we're spending for personal development. We need to know how much we're spending for travel. And I have a lot of faith in our administration and in our finance department that has done a fantastic job of keeping us on track and keeping us out of trouble and letting us know what the financial picture is looking like and letting us know what we're doing and how we're doing. You know, there's an article, front page article on the New Sun today about a school district that's trying to overcome a $4.2 million deficit. I don't know if any of you saw that. $4.2 million deficit. We haven't had those kinds of things happen in this district for a while. I remember a time when I was on the board where we had to sign TAWs, Tax Anticipation Wares, just to make payroll. So there's, we're borrowing money every payday just to cover payroll. And, and we've gotten on a very sound, very strong track. And it isn't by accident. It's because the people that we are entrusting to, to make some of the decisions for us and help us to make our decisions are being very fiscally sound and very fiscally responsible. And so I think that we just need to, to continue to promote excellence, promote development, promote education and just kind of watch how we're presenting, uh, our opinions on, on some of these, some of these, uh, adventures, let's say, that some of these educators are going to experience. Because for them, it's a great thing. A lot of these, a lot of these events they go to may end up being life-changing events for them. They may come back with a whole new, uh, frame of mind, a whole new attitude, a whole new idea about how to approach their job and how to do it better. So, you know, as I said, we just need to kind of, kind of make sure that we're not making them feel that we're questioning their motives and, 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 and making them feel guilty about that. Now, another issue that really is troubling me is this, um, Idaho State University situation. It is Idaho, right? Okay? That is very troubling. And I, I look at that and I'm hearing that this university is not accredited by the accrediting agencies it's supposed to be accredited to. And I just think that we need to look very closely at what the situation is. I think I need more information, okay? I think, yeah, I know, I'm getting all the notes of caution about what I say and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping not to say the wrong thing. If I do, Kathy, please kick me, okay?
No, I don't.
Well, sometimes we need it. But what, what I'm going to say is that as a board member, I'm troubled by this and I think I need a lot more information than I don't have. So I'm just going to ask that the administration keep us informed and let us know what happened, what we're doing in response to it and what, and what kind of a solution, uh, is going to come from this or what we can expect. So I just hope that, that we get a good outcome without me taking a position on anything, but it is a, it's something that troubles me. Because, you know, I know that, that there are a lot of people that spend a lot of time and, you know, hoping to advance themselves. And, um, uh, I wouldn't want to be in their position right now because it's a very, very uncertain position. And all I'm going to say is that I want to ask for the administration to keep the board informed so that we know what's going on because a lot of people are asking us a lot of questions and frankly, I just don't know how to answer them. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Riddle? Second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 8:55 PM.